It's 9:30, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Board Meeting of March 12, 2024. And at this time, if we could have the roll call. Madam Clerk, go right ahead.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. And if I could have the Vice Mayor lead us in invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
Good morning. Dear God, as we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keep in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make the world a better place. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any additions, deletions, substitutions to the agenda as presented?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board, on page 42, item 3X2 has been deleted and will be brought back to the board on April 2. On page 61, 6A1, there's a revised motion title and summary. That concludes our additions, deletions, and substitutions.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Administrator. We have the adoption of the agenda with those additions and deletions as stated. Very good. Did you get that, the first and the second? Okay, the first is by Vice Mayor. The second is by Commissioner Weiss. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. Moving right along to the consent agenda, which, if you're following at home, is from pages 9 to 46. Is there anybody who wishes to pull anything from the consent agenda? See, no one at this time. If I could have a first to accept, adopt the consent agenda as stated. Commissioner Baxter, a second by Commissioner Woodward. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously at this time. Now, moving right on to public hearings, which are found on page 47 of our agenda. And we have a public hearing from the Office of Financial Management and Budget. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. And you got those as well. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. Moving. You okay? Is she okay?
Talking to each other.
Oh, that's okay. I just thought you had one say something.
We were talking about the new lights.
Oh, we have new lights. Very nice. I knew that was my glasses. There we go. Okay, moving right along to regular agenda, which is found on page 51. Oh, I thought we had, oh, we have a card? Commissioner Weiss? No, not for the public hearings.
We already did.
We did. See, we have new lights now, so we see everything better. Okay. On the regular agenda, which starts on page 50.
Madam Mayor, you need to conduct the public hearings first?
Yes, sir, we did.
No, you did the motion to receive and file. You've got four public hearings yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you are on this. Tell you, I can't slip anything through anymore. Okay, so let's go back to the public hearings. And, hi. Good morning. On item 481. 46, okay. 46. 46. We almost passed you by, didn't we? Very good. All right. It's on Housing and Economic Development, and we have a staff report. You may proceed.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Staff recommends in this item to conduct a tax equity and fiscal responsibility public hearing in accordance to the Internal Revenue Code, adopt a tougher resolution to approve the issuance of the bond for the purpose of making a loan to the borrower to acquire and construct student housing facilities. The location is at 3601 North Military Trail in Boca Raton. That's District 4. The issuance amount is not to exceed $125 million, and its uses are going to be to finance the acquisition of an existing three-story student facility, the Mary and Harold Purper, with 170 beds, and the design and development, construction of two three-story student housing facilities with 474 beds at Lynn University. There is no county obligations on these bonds.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions? I see Commissioner Weiss.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve items 4A, 1A, and B.
Good. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Woodward. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Will you also be taking? Let me see, now that was 4A. All right. Okay, now we have 4B1. Just one second. And do we have? Very good. Good morning.
You got to see our new foster.
And you may proceed.
Good morning. Sheri Brown, Director of OFMB. I have Robin Lawrence and Lisa Master from the office with me.
Good morning.
4B1 is increasing our capitalization of our fixed assets from 1,000 to 5,000, and this ordinance just matches what the state requires.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
No questions, Madam Mayor, but I do have a point of personal privilege I'd like to do, but I would make also a motion to adopt this item.
Okay, so you have two items. Would you like? Okay, very good. Motion to adopt this item. I have a second with Commissioner Baxter. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. Did you have a point of personal privilege?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to recognize a former Westmont Beach Commissioner, Richard Rouse, who's here, and also my former administrative assistant, Michael Carter, who's also in the back.
Very good. Very good. Welcome.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have 4B2 also.
You want to also, 4B? Is this what you want to do too? Also 4B2?
No, you know, we put them on the agenda. We'll try to get them adopted.
Let's just do it. Let's proceed right along with 4B2. Good morning.
Good morning. 4B2 is our annual mid-year cleanup, and as we had talked about it in January, we're proposing to take $50 million out of this to move into our CIP. So in this agenda item, it puts it in a reserve for CIP, and then in April, we have an item coming back that will actually move it into the various capital project funds.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments by members of the Commission?
I'm happy to make the motion.
Very good. And Vice Mayor, go right ahead. You want to make the motion?
I did.
Very good. Oh, you did. I didn't hear you. Very good. We have a second. Very good. Second by Commissioner Bernard. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are you also? Okay, very good. Thank you. Now we're going on to... I was looking at a picture of a cat, and I got lost my way. 4C1. This is what happens when you have animal pictures, right? Pet pictures. 4C1. And do we have a staff? Okay, we have a card, and we have a staff report as well. So let's hear from staff first. Good morning, Mr. Turnin. Chief, good morning. Good morning, you all. You may proceed when ready.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and County Administrator. I'm joined by Tanya Davis Johnson, Director of OEBO, as well as...
Chief Turnin, I'm going to ask you to speak right in top of microphones so we can hear you. Thank you, sir.
As well as Richard Senna from the County Attorney's Office. Per Board Directive, we are bringing back on second read an ordinance, which includes the modification of the definition of the current gross annual revenue standards for small businesses under the EBO program, as well as a modification to permit SMWBEs performing on contracts with minimum mandatory SBE goals to remain on contracts after the SBE graduates from the OEBO program. With that, we have a prepared presentation if the Board should desire.
The, we have all been presented as board members with your presentation. Is that correct, sir? Chief Turnin, is this what we have? Okay. And we've all had an opportunity to review it, but would anybody like to have a verbal staff report on this issue at this time? Okay? If not, we're going to rely on the very good pass out that we've been able to review. And unless there's anybody else who wishes to speak from staff, do we have any questions? Commissioner Baxter.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning.
I had a question. We had talked about potentially working with our partners within the community and finding out the cost analysis. Did we have any updates on that?
No, ma'am, we don't have an update this morning. We are working to meet with industry, with the AGC, the ABC, the Black Coalition of Constructors, in order to have a conversation to address the question, which was, what was the cost of them doing business with local small businesses? So we don't have a report for that today, but we are working to get that information.
And I'm going to ask, without objection, to give direction to actually have a study. I thought about this some more, and I'd really like to see a study, a professional study done comparing what the cost of this is. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any objection to having the study done by the Board? Then, you should go right ahead.
Yeah.
Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
I don't necessarily have an objection to having them come back, but I'd like to know what the cost of the study is going to be first. It may be more expensive than what this is actually costing, but I'd like them to bring back at least what they, bring us back a cost, if you don't mind making that as part of your...
Before we, before we, I wonder if I could just interject and recognize the County Administrator. Go right ahead.
I want to be clear what we're, what we're looking for, because we're going to need to depend upon the contractors, the prime contractor's information. So that is the information they're going to need to submit to us, so that we will also know how did they come about going after their subs, which means that's a competitive process. We need all of that type of data and information. If we're going to hire an outside entity, this will not be a quick and easy looksee, because we're all supposed to be competitive. Our primes are also competitive when they go after the subs. So they, you know, for the most part, we're looking at a 10% difference max if we're choosing a small business or a SMWBE over a non-SMWBE. So the max that they can get is a 10% difference. So I need to make sure we're going to bring back what you're looking for, and we're going to need to talk to industry, because we're going to need their records. And, and most private businesses don't want to give you that kind of data. But that's the kind of data we're going to need in order for a proper analysis to be performed, in order to determine whether there is a disparate difference in utilizing our small businesses here in Palm Beach County.
And to clarify, I don't want to exclude industry. I want them involved. I also want, I just want some official study of analysis of that, and to your point, you said it's 10%. I would just like to verify, confirm, how many of our contracts have cost 10%? How many have gone over more? How many less of this implementation? I do not, I guess, disagree with the cost of this study, but what studies we have seen are, can be fairly expensive. But at the end of the day, we're talking about, we spend millions. I mean, we just increased from 9 million to 13 million as the max until somebody graduates the program. So is there like a cost point, Commissioner Weiss, that you would like us to stay under for this study?
I have no idea what these things cost. I just prefer that we get, understand what it's going to cost us before we agree to do it.
I'm not opposed to that. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Glad we cleared that up. Thank you, Commissioner Baxter. Vice Mayor Moreno.
Thank you. A little while back, we had the auditor in here saying that they had suspended their reports of OEBO. I do not want to see that going forward in the future. We need to have regular reports, and actually, I said that to the auditor yesterday. Let us know where we need regular reports, because, you know, if we don't know, we don't know. And this is one of those instances where we didn't know. So I would, I'm looking forward to getting an auditor's report on this in the future. Thank you.
Hi, very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We do have a card on this before we take a vote. Commissioner Weiss?
Yes. Michelle De Potter.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, County Administrator Baker and County Attorney. My reason for being here today is just to once again thank you in this final reading. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, for your support out the gate when we brought this request for reconsideration to you all on January 30. The AGC did. On behalf of all of our members, we appreciate the size increase in standards, and we appreciate the clarification on contractual projects, moving forward what to do if someone has graduated out of the program. I do want to just take the remaining bit of my time to address what you all just discussed. The staff has reached out to the AGC to work together and provide the information, and I'm waiting to give Tanya some dates on that. So we're happy to meet. We're always happy to meet to satisfy your inquiries. But I do just want to make sure that I understand the assignment. I thought that originally you were looking to see how much more it costs primes to do business with SBEs. Is that correct?
Are you?
Yes.
Wait. Ms. Potter, are you, are you questioning one of the, one of the Commissioners?
I shouldn't do that.
No, that's okay. But actually, this may be, if it's okay with everybody? Okay, so have a dialogue.
So I know who to get to the table, who to bring to the table, and what we're actually, I want to have the right people at the table. So are you asking the primes how much it costs more for them to do business utilizing SBEs or MWBEs? Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks again for your continued support and for this passing today. We appreciate it.
No problem at all. Thank you. I appreciate that, Commissioner Baxter. We have, Commissioner Weiss?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve item 4C1.
Very good. And we have a second by Commissioner Baxter. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. All right, very good. Moving right along to 5... I'm sorry. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize Mayor Michael Brown from Hypoluxo here. Just happy to see you in chambers this morning.
Very good. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners, sir. All right. 5A. If we have on Housing and Economic Development. Good morning.
This will be later? Or still? Or the... It was kind of part of it, but I'll just...
Good morning, members of the staff.
Good morning again, Commissioners, Mayor Sheri Howard, Housing and Economic Development. We are here today to look for approval of the economic development ad valorem tax exemption, the adoption of a resolution providing for a referendum to be held on August 20. That's the primary election, to determine whether the Board may grant an economic development ad valorem tax exemption.
That's just to keep you awake. Nothing to do. Now that I got your attention, listen up. Go right ahead.
To provide an exemption to new businesses and expansion of existing businesses, as defined in Florida statutes. The exemptions are used to encourage economic development and establish new jobs. Exemption program was originally approved in Palm Beach County by the Commissioners in 1994, then reauthorized in 2004, and then 2014. The current program expires on August 31, 2024, and all exemptions are approved by the Board on a case-by-case basis. We also are looking for you to approve the ballot title, summary, and questions, and authorize the letter to transmit the ballot language to the supervisor of elections, which is contained in your packet. The ballot title, summary, and question is actually spelled out in Florida statutes, and they ask that you substantially follow that language. So we've utilized that same language, and it's the same language that was used in the past. The title is Economic Development Property Tax Exemptions to New Businesses and Expansions of Existing Businesses. The ballot summary, the economic development, or the economic ad valorem tax exemption provides Palm Beach County with an additional economic development incentive tool to assist new and expanding businesses to make a positive impact on Palm Beach County's economy, with the expectation that these businesses will create new full-time jobs in Palm Beach County. The question, shall the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County be authorized to grant pursuant to Statute 3, Article 7 of the State Constitution, property tax exemptions to new businesses and expansions of existing businesses that are expected to create new full-time jobs in Palm Beach County? Yes, for authority to grant the exemptions? No, against authority to grant the exceptions? Thank you.
Very good. Do we have any questions by the Board on this issue? Okay. Can we go ahead and approve 5A1, Mr. Attorney? Rather than 5A1A and B?
You could. You could do them, do them all together.
I'd rather do them all together. If there's any objection, we'll do them separately. Otherwise, we'll do them all together. So I need a first, and note that it would be on 5A1A and B.
I'm making a motion to adopt 5A1 and B.
Very good. By the Vice Mayor to approve the first, and I have a second somewhere by Commissioner Barnett. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. See that it passes unanimously. Where's, just one second.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Look, I'll refer.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to 5A2. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just another point of personal privilege. I do, I do see Senator Bobby Powell, who is here, also in the chambers.
Very good. Must mean that you're done in Tallahassee. Good. Well, welcome to the Board of County Commissioners, Senator.
And Madam Mayor, just seeing Mayor Michael Brown here also, just thank you for being here. We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
This is almost like the Academy Awards with all these important people here.
And I'm getting $175,000 swag bag.
Oh, no, no, no. No, 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 Vice Mayor. All right. Moving right on to 5A2, and that's A, B, C, D, and E. And shall we have a staff report?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Tammy Fields, County Administration. At the table is also Jonathan Brown, Sheri Howard, Carlos Serrano from HED, Howard Falcon from County Attorney's Office, and Alisa Kramer from the Youth Services Department. This is an item regarding Vida Nova, and one of the things that's wonderful about this item is it is actually addressing one of the particular needs for housing in our community, and that is for our youth that are aging out of foster care. Jeff DiMario from Vida Nova is also present to answer any questions, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Brown to make the presentation.
You're recognized, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Tammy. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. So again, as Tammy said, another exciting project. Over the last multiple years, the Board has authorized us to release a number of different requests for proposals. And so this project is one, Vida Nova, that applied for a couple of different RFPs that we had. And as we took a look at this last request, and we realized that they were eligible through two different funding programs, we're asking the Board to rescind the initial offer of the $550,000 in ARPA, and let's put all of the dollars that they need within the home ARP. So that way, the project only has one set of federal regulations to adhere to, as opposed to two separate set of federal regulations. And then we're requesting that staff be directed to negotiate the agreement and to delegate signature authority, so we can help Vida Nova move this project forward. And I can share any much, anything else you'd like to know about the project.
Very good. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Weiss at this time.
Thank you. Thank you for your brief presentation. I just want to, number one, I want to just really appreciate what Vida Nova does with our children that are aging out of foster, youth, I should say, youth, young people aging out of foster care. Children in foster care, you know, in our county, we, we do have a number of additional support programs through some great nonprofits, Vida Nova being one of them, and very, very happy. I also, I did a quick back-of-the-napkin cost estimate on a per-unit cost, and based on the information provided here, it, they're able to build these units at $233,000 a unit, which is, that's, that's wonderful to see, to be able to get so many units built at a reasonable cost. And so congratulations to however you all put that together, because that's, that's great. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve item 5A2, A, B, C, D, and E. And then we have one card.
Should we have the, should we have the cards first, and then we take the vote?
Correct.
Okay, I think that would be appropriate. So I have Vice Mayor Moreno. Did you want to say something?
Actually, Mayor, I did. Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Our county has almost 7,000 nonprofits that do good in our community, and one of those is...
Vida Nova.
Vida Nova. And Jeff does a phenomenal job, so phenomenal that Impact of the Palm Beaches gave them $100,000 Impact Grant two years ago. So I just want to say, anything that we can do and, and make this easier for you, we are so happy to do it. So, and I will second Commissioner Weiss's motion.
Before we take the vote, now that we have a first and a second, we have a couple of cards. Commissioner Weiss, would you read the cards, please?
Yes, Jeff DiMario. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. I think it was about two years ago, I was standing in our parking lot on Alpha Street with an older foster youth. She just entered our program after foster care, and we were standing, looking at another building that was for housing, and the building was just completed. It was beautiful. And she looked at it, and she kind of looked at me and said, you know, one day, can we live in a house or an apartment like that? As opposed to having housing that expires or ends or is temporary? And so it got me thinking, where do older foster youth go when they age out for the second time, right? At 22, 23 years old? Are they ready to enter this housing market? Thank goodness for our partnership with Housing and Economic Development, also Youth Services, for rallying around this idea of truly affordable housing, right? Affordable housing that's for that 50% and less. Why? Because it's hard to find. It's really hard to find in the community and the youth. Look, I get it. Housing, in my opinion, is preventative medicine. If we can fix it, we can help with employment, health care, and a myriad of other things that come down the line. So this building really serves as not only hope for youth to look at another building and say, I could live there, I'm not going to be excluded from that, but also seeing that they can live to their true potential. And so again, I'm standing here in front of you, not just as a representative of Vida Nova and our Board of Directors, but also the 520-plus youth that we serve every year. And so thank you for your support again, and for having us here and this opportunity.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Thank you so much for that presentation. Well spoken. Sir, you're recognized.
Mayor, I'm just going to add, you know, again, we just wanted to also highlight the county's work together, the multiple departments that works with organizations like Vida Nova, from community services to youth services and more. And I know Youth Services has done a lot with Vida Nova, and I'm not sure, Elise, if there's anything you needed to share.
Very good. You're recognized, ma'am. State your name.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Elisa Kramer, interim director for Palm Beach County Youth Services Department. And Jonathan is correct, the Youth Services Department contracts with Vida Nova for a Pathways to Employment contract. In that program, Vida Nova has knocked the outcomes out of the park. They are helping every year, hundreds of young adults, youth, get connected to jobs, to get trained, to get skills in the trades. They, their goals are that young people are employable, workforce-ready. While they have, we have contracted for them to target 75 youth and young adults each year, they have reached the hundreds. So in that area, there are 225 every year. And it's the same for gaining employment by job placements. They work directly with employers, they transition the young people, they help them, you know, get in the door, but also stay employed. They provide clothing, they provide all sorts of support throughout the community to help them stay employed. They also have worked a lot to get young people with diplomas. So one of our outcome goals is that the youth actually go to college or continue on through a trade. We know that a lot of young people graduate from, or exit foster care without having graduated from high school. So they may not have a GED, they may not have a high school diploma. They have so many supports to allow them to get that first step, and then move forward into employment and trades. And they're, they're just a fantastic partner. They're definitely in, in great standing with Youth Services, and thank you for the opportunity to share their good work.
Very well. Thank you so much. So this time, we have another card. Commissioner Weiss, do we have two cards or one? One card. Excellent. So we have a first and a second. All those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Excellent presentation. We're going to move on now to 5, second, the top of page 53, 5A3, Housing and Economic Development. Do we have a staff report on this, or?
Yes, Mayor.
You go right ahead and proceed, sir.
So today's staff is coming, requesting the approval of two new ad valorem positions, a financial analyst, one, and a project manager. Because we are already within the fiscal year, the amount that we're requesting is $104,000, not the full staff salaries for those positions. And the reason why we're requesting them is that over the past few years, with the different funding sources that the county has received, whether it has been the ARPA dollars, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, or even some of the coronavirus-related dollars, and now even the Home ARP, we have been able to continue moving projects forward. But now that these projects are coming forward, we actually need staff to actually support the project. So we're coming today requesting the board to approve two new positions to help support these specific programs for housing and economic development.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We have any questions or comments to the staff at this time? Yes, we do. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Couple of questions, and I'm going to make a few statements. I think it is absolutely imperative for departments to have appropriate resources, staff members, and funding to get things done. I've never wavered from that. I have, would like to, because this has come up, dispel a few rumors. Whenever I fight for a fourth aid, whenever I talk about wages, it is to make my office more effective, to get more done in our limited time here. We either get four or eight years, we don't get more. Be able to have more people in a department or in any position helps us to be more effective, so I would never want to deny another department from being as effective as possible. That's, so thank you for bringing this forward. The only other thing I would like to add to this is the same thing as that I was saying before, I would, instead of adding positions, we have a lot of open positions that are not filled. Instead of making it a habit of coming to us and asking for more contingency funds, I would really like to see a transfer from open positions, maybe getting, and putting that to fill these required positions. Because if we've had positions outstanding for quite a while, there's no need to keep adding more dollars and taking out of our contingency, in my opinion. I would like to see them transferred over, and see if we could approach it that way versus using the dollars out of these funds. Thank you.
Any response at all? Would you like to respond, anybody, to that?
I'll allow administration to respond if there's a response to, to that.
Ah, Ms. Baker, welcome back. Did you, if not, that's fine, we can proceed on. Go right ahead.
These particular positions require some expertise in, in the housing arena, and that's why they're being asked for here. I can't really speak to the other vacant positions, but I know that within HED, they are working diligently to fill any positions that they have open.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor? Yes, Ms. Baker.
It appears there's a number of vacant positions, but again, we cannot move enterprise positions from enterprise funds. We've got vacant positions in the general fund. We are attempting to fill them as soon as possible. Like the, every other sector, private as well as public, we're all challenged with positions. If this board is directing me to move positions that are in other general fund locations, I'm, I will move those positions out of there. However, those positions were moved, they were granted for a specific purpose, and when it is time to fill those, I will come back to the board and ask that those positions be replaced as well. It is not that we've just got positions and we don't need them. We do. However, like everybody else, we're challenged with filling positions.
Very good.
So if the board directs us to move them, I will move them from some other general fund, but when it's time for those departments to fill those positions, I will come back to the board.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Vice Mayor Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you. I know that we've talked about this, this is, you know, like beating a dead horse, but there are vacant positions. We, and as you said, there are some in the enterprise funds, there are some in the general funds. I think from, from our purposes, and where Commissioner Baxter is going with this, is that if there are positions that have been vacant for a year, obviously, those jobs are being done by somebody else now. So releasing that position and moving it to this, so that we are not interrupting the contingency fund, that might be a, a solution that we can look at. We, we do need to know the length of time that jobs are vacant, and this is something we've talked about for years. You know, if a job is vacant for two weeks, that's different. But if a job is vacant for a year, obviously, it's getting done, so let's release the, that job and move it over to another area where it is in need. And we would have to know what the classification is too. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Baxter.
There's no public comments, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. I have one other light on, and I'd like to recognize Commissioner Weiss at this time.
Thank you. This, I'm going to direct these questions to the administrator. So if you had a, a position that's open, let's say, for six months, and then you fill it, the six months unutilized salary for that position would then, would then be put back in, would be recovered back into the budget, correct?
That is correct.
So the money is, even though the budget allocates money for the position, if the, if it's unused, it comes back. So whether, and, and we see, in fact, we just did it, we just did the mid-year retruing up of, of these accounts, moved over, I want to say it was about $50 million that came back in. So I'm just telling my colleagues, I mean, whether we do it one way or the other way, I don't think it, in, in actual dollars, it's not, I mean, in this case, we're adding two new positions. What's going to come back is, at some point, when those other positions need to get filled, they'll have to come back in here, and we will create two new positions for those positions. And my only concern would be, one of the issues that I've heard that we have is that as we're trying to hire people, we are not as nimble as private corporations are, private businesses. They can move light speed, and we lose people because of the length of time it takes to bring them on. And I just want to make sure that by doing this, we are not going to slow down the ability to re, or the ability to hire people, because they're going to have to come back to the board before they can make an offer to them.
Correct. Thank you very much. Commissioner Weiss, Commissioner Baxter, did you want to make the motion at this time?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to make the motion to do what is stated here, except transferring the positions from the allowable, I believe it's general, that are already created. However you would like to, us to word that, Attorney? I'd appreciate it.
So is that actually affecting this, this item, or is that something separate?
They're asking to add new, ad valorem-funded positions and transferring dollars from contingency reserves. It is my, my understanding that if we do it with transferring those positions, then the money is not coming out of them contingency reserves.
I had heard the county administrator having a concern because of these, these are enterprise fund positions?
I don't know where the positions at. This board directs me to find two positions within the general fund. What I would need to do is the inter-fund transfer, because I need to move the positions along with the dollars. It depends upon the type of position that we find. We're going to need to ensure that adequate funding is available for those positions. Not all positions are equal. So in one department, it might be clerical-type positions that have been open or professional, depending on where we transfer. But if you give me directions, we'll work that out. I will need to come back to the board when those positions are needed, and I'll be asking for those positions again, even though they've already been allocated.
Does that answer the question?
I believe so. I think that would essentially be adding a D to this, this item, to the motion for this item, to, I guess, eliminate those positions, two positions in compliance with this item, for these two positions.
Very good. If I could, Commissioner Baxter, we have two other lights on to include in the conversation, and so let me recognize Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that these are two separate issues, and I think I would prefer that we pass this motion, go ahead and start the hiring process for these positions, but then we would ask that you look at maybe all the positions that we have, any that have been outstanding for a year or more. We, we would set a time on this to, to look at maybe, you know, eliminating those or moving them, but I don't think that we should conflate the two, and I don't want to slow the process down. These positions are, are meant to keep us in compliance with federal regulations. We have received a lot of funding, and with that comes a lot of rules, and that's what these positions are meant to help us with. So I don't want to slow that down by trying to find other positions. I think that these are two separate issues, and that should be a separate board direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Woodward. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's exactly what I was going to say, so I just.
That's exactly what you were going to say?
Yes. She stoled my thunder.
Wow. Keep you two separated here. All right. So Commissioner Baxter, I believe you have a motion on the floor. Do you wish to amend it or to proceed with it as stated?
I will amend it, and also ask that we do get the information that Commissioner Woodward said. I would like to know how many of these positions in the general fund have been outstanding in each, like, for how long? So we'd love to have that information. So I'd like to amend it. We'll just approve it as is and just request that information. So I will make the motion to approve 5A3, A, B, and C.
And I'll second.
Okay, and we have a second by Commissioner Woodward. And all those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. Now, with regard, Commissioner Baxter, to your, to your question, can we, would we like to have a, maybe a staff send us this information, Ms. Baker? Right. And we could do it in a, in inter-office to all of us, and that would be sufficient. Thank you so much. All right, we're moving right along. I'd like to take a personal privilege and recognize my good friend and our clerk and comptroller, Joe Abruzzo. Good to see you again, Senator Abruzzo, Clerk Abruzzo. Thank you. All right, moving on to 5A4. Do we have a staff report on that? And do we need it? Everybody, do we need a staff report on, on this 5A4? Commissioner Weiss?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve item 5A4.
Very good. And we have a second with Commissioner Bernard. A second, right? All those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you. That was fast. That was very, very efficient. Moving right on to 5B1. Do we, let me see. Did you, a second. Commissioner Baxter, Commissioner Weiss, I'm going to turn your lights off. And did you want to speak, Clerk Abruzzo, at this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Very good. You're recognized.
I appreciate it, Madam Mayor. Well, good morning, County Commissioners. I wanted to speak about this item, which would be increasing parameters to allow us to invest more in Israeli bonds, but I did want to briefly, briefly give you an update where we are financially in our investment portfolio that also contributes to, to the Israeli bonds. We just reported to you a record-breaking return on our investment of $173 million in the last fiscal year, which is an all-time record, both per capita and dollar figures in county history. We have a goal over the next five years that, as an officer in office, we will top over $1 billion in investment income to you from our office, which typically in an eight-year tenure ranges around $160 million. So we're, we're far, we have our sights set to really get you the maximum amount of money as possible. Currently, I have to thank you, Commissioner Sachs, Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner Marino, who were on the commission back in 2021 when you raised the threshold in Israeli bonds, and Commissioner Weiss, I apologize, to 10%, up from 5%. And we are here asking for another 5%. Commissioner Weiss's efforts on our Investment Policy Committee and championing that initiative has been paramount for us in our office. Currently, we have the largest holding in Israeli bonds in the United States of America. No other government agency has the amount of money that Palm Beach County has, zero. We currently hold at $473 million. That will give us, and our durations are between two and three years in Israeli bonds, that will return us in the, in the duration, just shy of $60 million of pure profit over the next two to three years in Israeli bonds. By upping it, we will likely get closer to $75 million, possibly 80, depending on what the rates are at the time. And, and I can tell you that outside our U.S. Treasury, still, there's no current international bond that has the safety, security, and return that the Israeli bonds do. That's clearly putting politics aside and strictly sticking to the financial information and the returns we are getting. Our current yield on our overall, overall portfolio is at 5.3%, which again, is, is one of the tops, not only in Florida, but in the nation. So we're working hard. I have to commend our in-house staff. We do everything in-house, and I like to tout that all the time, where a lot of major counties farm it out to financial institutions. We avoid the fees, we handle it in-house. I, I see here today Felicia Landerman, our in-house treasurer, Radcliffe Brown, who is overall head of finance, and we have an, an ace expert in John Burford, who you all know. We meet face-to-face nearly every week, and we're on the phone at least every other day, talking about how we are going to shift our, our dollars here and our investments to make sure we always maximize it. The inflation numbers just came out. Unfortunately, February, they went up slightly. So it did not hit the mark that many anticipated, where the feds were clearly anticipating a rate cut. We do not know if that may happen later on this summer. So we are on top of it, and I just wanted to let you know that. And again, your, your support, and where we're headed with Israeli bonds on our overall portfolio is truly second to none. I'm not just saying that as hyperbole, the, the facts are in the dollars, and happy to keep reporting this good news to you all. So that's the most important thing.
It's very impressive. Thank you so much, Clerk Abruzzo, and thank you for being such great stewards of taxpayers' money. Impressive.
Thank you.
And, and your staff, I know that you work as a team together, and it has really been to the benefit of all the people of, of Palm Beach County, and also to our greatest ally, the State of Israel. Your statistics are certainly impressive, and I'm very happy that you are our clerk and comptroller, and I'm very proud as a Palm Beach County resident, and not, and the mayor, to see these numbers and to see our support. and to see our support for the State of Israel. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Baxter?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve 5B, 1.
Very good. Commissioner Weiss would like to make the second. And if there are no other comments, all those four, everybody...
We have one card.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have one card.
Alexandria Larson.
All right, the only reason I'm here, not because of any particular thing, but the investments. What an unusual thing we've come across this year because historically, our investments brought back 30 to 60 million bucks, always. I mean, I went back a long time, back, Wilkins. And Ms. Wilkins was so great to me. She always said, "Follow the money, Al." And here we are, we're changing up a cap, and everybody that I speak to, we're confused. Maybe Joe needs to come and make a presentation on how we do our investments. Because it was shocking, it was written about in the Palm Beach Post, that we found $172 million. It came from the investments because someone was chastised because we were short $172 million in capital improvements and $100 million to make this building all whole. Because obviously, it's falling down, and we need $100 million to fix it. This is the, I'm giving you public perception, Commissioners, because people call me in the middle of the night and ask me questions, and I'm like, "Christ, I don't know." I really do. I'll answer honestly, and I'll say, "Call them." But they're kind of intimidated. People are intimidated by politics. And it's sad, I shake when I come down here. It's like, I don't want to come down. But I do want to come and ask you the question because we want to know how it works. They really do. They're trying to understand how government works. That is the problem, no other problem at all. Because we witnessed things up on the dais, and we've witnessed many, many things way before all of you were Commissioners. So we're jaded. We're not happy. We were told just last week, they said you weren't going to meet again, and there was an issue with the, you know, Wellington wanted to annex and all that stuff. And they said, "Oh, we're not meeting again, but we're meeting here today." So we're learning every single day. We are Commissioners, we're really trying. Your constituents are trying to learn. So maybe we need to know how it works. Because I don't want to pick on any investment, any at all. I don't know how they work. And I'm honest enough to come up here and tell you that. But it is, when it goes from 60 to 172 million, how did we accomplish that? That's what the taxpayers are asking. Because we don't know where the money comes for the investments. How much, what is Joe's cap for? Does he get 20 million bucks to invest? Does he get 50 million bucks to invest? I don't know. And I hope that your constituents, that's a question that's out there. So I'm letting you know, because I'll be down here again to ask you, or talking matters by the public, whatever I have to do to convey it to you. And I thank you for your patience with us because we don't know how it works. Your constituency doesn't know how it works. And I don't want to answer for anyone, ever. And then when I ask for questions, I do want to say something publicly. When you do a public records request, you do not have to do it formally. You do not have to, I can say I'm Madame X or Spider Woman.
Thank you so much for those comments. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Clerk Abruzzo, did you want to say anything more?
Sure.
It's not necessarily, but if you'd like, go right ahead, sir.
I will be brief, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, I'm happy to speak to any individual or group to explain how our investments work. When we came in, we were earning 27 million. So yes, the 27 million has obviously gone significantly up. That has to do with interest rates and how we invest the money. Currently, the portfolio has $4.6 billion in it. So that's the money that is invested to earn that nearly 200 million. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, Clerk Abruzzo. I believe we had Vice Mayor Marino and then Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you. And when we talk about interest rates and what we're earning, it's kind of like the interest you're paying on your house has gone up. And sadly, when the interest you're paying on your house goes up, the interest that investment dollars earn goes up also. So, can you hear me now? My mother always says she can't hear me when I'm speaking. My microphone is on, I need to talk louder. There we go. And my only caution about this is that, and as you said, Clerk Abruzzo, we have $4.6 billion in reserves, but those are in reserve pots for different things, not just the general fund. Some can be enterprise funds. My only caution is that, you know, historically, we have earned a lot less than what we're earning now. And I don't, I know I don't have to caution our finance team to do this, but when we forecast what we're going to need dollars for next year, I think that we continue on the lower amount of interest earned as opposed to the highest amount of interest earned because at some point in time, that interest earning is going to go down. And so we're just, we have a little bit of a windfall going on right now, and that's why we were able to actually return some dollars to our taxpayers last year because of this windfall. But in the future, this windfall is not going to happen because interest rates are going to level out. As you said, February, we were looking for a tax cut, I mean, an interest cut. And with that, the amount of interest that we earn would also go down. So am I saying this incorrectly?
Clerk Abruzzo, did you want...
Thank you. You are Commissioner, although I will say that as soon as we see cuts in the interest rates, we are going to lock in for longer durations. So I suspect what we are seeing today, we will see for many, many years to come.
Good, very good.
From your lips to God's ears. And then we can put more money in our capital improvement projects.
That was a robust conversation. Commissioner Baxter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Clerk Abruzzo. Thank you for, you know, investing properly. Thank you for bringing up the Israeli bond and increasing that and helping support our community over in Israel. Please, you know, thank you, continuing, thank you for everything you do and continue to do such an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we have a first and a second. I think all we're waiting for is the vote. All those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. And thank you so much for that great presentation. Thank you. All right, moving right along. We are now on 5C, 1. And we have staff. I guess everybody would, would anybody not want to have or does not need a staff report at this time?
I don't believe...
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Marino?
This is in my district. I don't believe we need a staff report. This is just something that is part of doing business, and I will make the motion to approve the Second Amendment to the agreement to County Mayor.
And we have a second by Commissioner Woodward. All those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. Very well done, staff. That was great, thank you very much.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, Clerk.
Can you please repeat the maker and the seconder for the record?
The first and the second? We have the first by Vice Mayor Marino, a second by Commissioner Woodward, and it was unanimous. Thank you for that. 5C, 2, is this the same staff? And do we, we have a card also. We could probably proceed to the staff report unless... Okay, let's proceed to the staff report. You're recognized.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Ismei Ajala, Assistant County Administrator and Facilities Development and Operations Director. With me today is Todd Bonlaren, Assistant County Administrator, Douglas Crane, Director of our Libers Department, Parvi Bhagad, Director of the Property and Real Estate Management Division, and Howard Falcon, Chief Attorney, Assistant County Attorney. This item recommends approval of an inter-local agreement with the town of Hypoluxa for the purchase of approximately 0.36 acres of town-owned property improved with a one-story, 3,510-square-foot building located at 7200 South Federal Highway for the establishment and operation of a new Palm Beach County library branch for $1.625 million plus recording costs estimated to be around $28. On July 11, 2023, the Board authorized staff to negotiate with the town the acquisition of the parcel subject of this inter-local agreement for the establishing of a new Hypoluxa library branch. The town has agreed to convey the property to the county by statutory warranty deed. The property and all its improvements will be purchased as is. In the event that the county wishes to sell said property during the first 50 years after recording the statutory guarantee deed, the town shall have the right of first refusal to purchase the property at the current purchase price plus of $1.625 million plus the value of improvements. The town shall have the option to repurchase the property in the event the county fails to commence design for the development of the new library within 12 months of recording of the warranty deed. The new Hypoluxa branch will operate as a satellite location of the existing Lantana Road branch. The county will acquire the property at the previously stated purchase price and bear all costs for capital improvements, currently estimated at $3 million. The cost of equipping the new branch is estimated at $440,000, and the estimated annual operating cost, which includes additional positions, at around $435,000. This purchase is funded by the Library Expansion Program Fund. All items previously discussed are currently allocated and budgeted, and this item will require a supermajority vote, that is, five Commissioners. This concludes staff presentation, and as usual, we will take any questions as you deem, and are appropriate.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments by members of the Board? All right, we do have one card. I'd like to have it read before we proceed to a vote. Commissioner Weiss?
Sure, Mayor Michael Brown.
Three minutes. Good morning, sir, you're recognized.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the County Commission Council. Thank you for having us. The town of Hypoluxa is very excited about having a library in our town. And it's a library that a lot of our residents will easily be able to walk to, to use the facility. It's going to be a great benefit to our town. In that regard, I'd like to recognize and thank Mr....
Crane, Mr. Crane?
Doug Crane and Mr. Bonlaren and his staff for all their work and effort on this project. And I would like to thank the County Commission for their vote of support on this issue. I appreciate it, the town will appreciate it. It's a project that we are all looking forward to in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And really accolades to Mr. Crane and Mr. Bonlaren. Commissioner Woodward?
Thank you. Yes, I would like to echo Mayor Brown. And this is a location that had some questionable businesses there before, so I think the community is very excited for this to be turned into a library. Thank you both for all of the work and all of your staff that's made this happen. I'm very excited about this, and with that, I'd like to make the motion...
Very good. So we have, unless there's any other questions or comments? We have a first by Commissioner Woodward, a second by the Vice Mayor, and all those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Mr. Crane, Mr. Bonlaren, and all the staff for this wonderful work. Nothing like adding a library. And thank you, Mayor, for coming here today and your work on this as well. Very nice. So let's move on to 5C, 3. And do we have the same staff?
That is correct.
Absolutely, let's proceed. Shall we hear this staff report? If not, go right ahead, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. So this item is basically seeking direction regarding the potential to explore a disposition of the county-owned property located at 429 Park Place, West Palm Beach. Please allow us first to share with you a little bit of general history regarding this property. Since the 1930s, the county has owned and operated the facility located at 429 Park Place in West Palm Beach for a variety of county light industrial functions, including road and bridge warehouse, purchasing warehouse, facilities management operations, and record storage of various county departments and constitutional officers. It is a 0.83-acre parcel that has an approximately 12,000-square-feet building that is currently being used as records warehouse by the Palm Beach County Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller. Associated with said property, the county has two separate leases for use of parking spaces. One lease is with the city of West Palm Beach, and the second one with a private owner of an adjoining property. Because of its proximity to the county's downtown West Palm Beach facilities, the property has added value as it serves as an easily accessible operations support base. The property is currently serving its intended purpose, and we have no approved plans for replacement and/or disposition, nor funding associated with the same other than what is required to maintain the property on an ongoing basis. Other than that routine maintenance, no dedicated funds are allocated again towards replacement or renovation of the property. In the past years, the area surrounding the property has seen some gradual transformation, which has triggered inquiries to staff as to the possibility of selling or swapping the property. The two most recent of such inquiries are included as an attachment to the agenda item. Therefore, staff is coming in front of the Board asking for direction if this Board would like us to explore a potential real estate action with that property. If that were to be the case, staff will like to share with the Board as well that right now we do not have a replacement facility, meaning space available to relocate the operations. We will need to search for the same. And if we were directed to explore and pursue that option, then we will be recommending that the conditions to ensure a completely seamless transition were built into that potential deal and competitive process coming down the road. In a nutshell, this concludes staff presentation. We will take any questions as this Board insists appropriate.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Thank you. This parcel is in District 2. It's also in my neighborhood, and so I'm very well aware of it. And in fact, I'd had conversations at different times with folks that have indicated their interest in this property. I have no objections to us, or having, giving staff direction that we, you know, look at this. But of course, it would, I agree with staff's assessment that this would have to be absolutely neutral to us. And in fact, I would expect it would be something that would provide additional revenues to the county if that was to move forward. But I want to add a couple of other conditions, and that is, this needs to have involvement from the neighborhoods, because there are two adjoining neighborhoods to this property. That area is, and I want to make sure that they have a voice[1660.86] That area is, and I want to make sure that they have a voice in this, so that would be Flamingo Park and Grandview Heights, that they're also included in any discussions on, on potentially what might happen with this property. And then, yeah, and then, in far as you're, what you're going to do, yeah, that, everything, all costs, everything else would have to be borne by, by somebody else and not the taxpayers. So that would, and with that, I would, I would make the motion with those, or do we need a motion or just direction?
I think what we want, I think.
But just asking for a vote direction.
Right. But should we take a vote on giving you this, this authority to research this issue? Mr. Attorney?
You don't have to.
Okay, so it's just a staff report.
Is okay with the direction given by Commissioner Weiss?
And, and that was, and this would be, so we're not going to take a vote, but we have all listened to staff report as well as Commissioner Weiss, but let's hear what Vice Mayor Marino and then Commissioner Baxter have to say. You're recognized.
Thank you. A lot of folks have come in front of us looking for us to dispose of property, but basically for the reason of housing. And if we're going to dispose of a piece of property and the effect is neutral, why bother? So for me to say yes to disposing of a piece of property, there needs to be a value to it and a better value than just being neutral, just being revenue neutral, especially since what we're really looking for in our disposing of property is for housing units. So that would be my caveat in your further research. I know when, when we all met, I said I'd be happy to listen to what the possibilities are on this, but revenue neutral, to me, why bother? Thank you.
Good. Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. What are the potentials for this property that we know of currently?
We have been approached for swapping and selling, no specific uses, and I will caveat that answer if I may. One of the two approaches included in the agenda item, it is my understanding that the person was seeking to expand the business that the company had adjoining properties. The second one was for redevelopment, nonspecific, so I don't have detailed information as to which way they would like to pursue.
Well, I know that, and I've heard repeatedly, we are in desperate need of some low-income and affordable housing, so I'd like to explore that avenue with this property as well. Thank you.
Very good. Yes, I believe that you have taken notes of the board direction at this time, so I appreciate your staff report, and I think you have direction on where to go. So if there's no other comments on this issue, we're going to move right on from to 5C4. Do we have the same staff? That's very easy, well organized here. Very good. You go right ahead. You're recognized.
Thank you again. Through this item, staff is seeking direction regarding the master planning of the 45th Street complex and the implementation of the capital improvement project for the replacement of the Community Services Department building. The current Community Services Building is located at 800 Torres Street, West Palm Beach. It was built in 1955. It is a three-story, approximately 30,000 square feet facility that has reached the end of its useful life. As a result, its replacement was included as part of the infrastructure sales test project plan with funding appropriation in fiscal year '25 and '26. The new Community Services Building is to be built on the county-owned 45th Street complex on the corner of Australian Avenue and 45th Street. The 45th Street Complex property is the site of the former county home facility and was intentionally retained as a strategic holding to accommodate future programming. As you may remember, back in August of 2021, while considering the possibility of entering into a development and conveyance agreement with the University of Florida for the development of a urban campus on the county-owned real estate holdings commonly referred to as Government Hill, which include the Community Services Department building, the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to accelerate implementation of the Community Services Building replacement project and to master plan the entirety of the county-owned 45th Street complex to provide for the long-term development of approximately 300,000 square feet of planned future use office space displaced from Government Hill as a result of the agreement with the University of Florida. That direction provided by the board was later reaffirmed in December 2021, February 2022, and August 2022 through separate agenda items that were brought for consideration by the board, all of them related to the then-current urban campus with the University of Florida. On March 2023, the board approved a contract for design services of the new Community Services Building with Alfonso Hernandez Architects, and we proceeded forward with the initial planning. As that was happening, as you all know, the agreement with University of Florida terminated in 2023, and when it automatically terminated, we were already engaged in the process of master planning and conceptual design. Staff and the design firm have continued to work together based on prior board direction provided. We have completed the program in surveying efforts and preliminary architectural products to inform development of that conceptual master plan. We have included a copy of the conceptual master plan as part of the agenda item as attachment number three. On November 28, 2023, the board held a workshop meeting, which included a presentation on the county's approved five-year CIP plan. During that workshop, we were directed to return with separate agenda items, providing an overview of the completed designs being recommended for implementation. Therefore, the agenda item that today we bring to your attention seeks to fulfill that board direction and seeks to obtain confirmation that we are to proceed forward with the design of the new Community Services Building, which will be cited at the 45th Street Complex. This concludes staff presentation, and once again, we will take questions as you deem it appropriate.
Good. Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I support, you know, us continuing with the planning and design of this project. Just want to make sure that as we're doing some of the design and some of the implementation that we do communicate with the city of West Palm Beach and the neighborhood associations. I believe no sure neighborhood association, because, you know, if they're not involved, then I'm going to get yelled at, and I'm going to yell at Ms. Baker.
No, 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 that's not going to happen. Not going to happen.
Because they yell at us all the time, so. So please communicate with the neighbors, so in that way, they are aware of what we're doing, so in that way, they'll be informed. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Bernard. We have a card, but are there any other questions by members of this board on this issue? Very good. Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Alexandria Larson.
Because when I look at the dates of the agreements, and we did it over and over again, that's when COVID was at its height. A lot of people weren't paying attention, commissioners, you know, and it did. It said the one building, it's built in '55, but it's, it's not worth anything anymore. We want to tear it down and build some more crap. Maybe a 25-story building. That's what it sounds like. That's my observation, no one else's. Well, a couple of people's observations, but they're not here to speak to you, I am. And I am, it's like, we do these villages and triangles and all this stuff, and we are, when you read the newspaper, we're being stymied in some areas, like we're arguing about the price of things and what we're going to get for the taxpayers, because always, when, when you're up there, it's other people's money. That's what it is. The taxpayers' money, that's what we're doing, and we don't know sometimes what the best thing to do is, and neither, you know, you might not either when you're dealing with some of these issues, and I'll, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, but hopefully, when we're building these buildings that cost a lot and we're doing all this stuff, we're really looking at it in a fiduciary, fiduciary manner. I'm saying the word incorrectly, and I apologize, but I do. I hope, I just, when I look at the dates, there were times when you, 40 people couldn't come into this room during that timeframe because of COVID, because, you know, everybody was afraid of everything, so you didn't have a lot of participation. Now you're slowly getting participation back for the public, and they do. They are trying to understand, and I hope, I'm going to transfer all the phone calls to you. I'm just going to punch in your number, because I have a landline where you can transfer the number, forward it, I'll forward it to you guys. That way, they call you and they can ask you the questions, commissioners, because we are, we got a lot of questions, because we've got all these transit villages and different things that we're planning on, and I don't know what the future of West Palm is going to look like, or Palm Beach County. So hopefully, we'll always step back when we're spending this money, because like you said, somebody said they were going to yell at Verdina. She'll get yelled at, so somebody will get yelled at, and thank you for being out there always. I'm not, you know, but I am, I do question these things when it's reached its life-ending. I want to know who made that decision about a building in a particular spot, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized, and then Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I received a text message for, from a constituent that this building was supposed to be named after our beloved former County Commissioner Maude Ford Lee, and I want to make sure that, that it's still going to be the Maude Ford Lee Center, because it wasn't as part of this presentation.
Very good. Has staff received that?
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Weiss.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I support Commissioner Bernard's comments. I just want to say, my recollection of what happened here during the pandemic was, we had lots of participation by lots of people, and it was, so that was my recollection. Other people may have a different version of it, but it seemed like we had a lot of public input during that time.
Yes, we did. Thank you so much. Has staff understood the direction that has been named today? Very good. We don't need a vote, you have the direction. Very good. And if there's no other comments, we're going to conclude this section and go on to, to board appointments. So we have, we have a number of board appointments to the zoning commission, and we have two openings for the zoning commission, so I have requested an opinion by the county attorney as to how to proceed at this juncture, and let me state that if there is, we're going to open the board up for nominations for these two appointments to the zoning commission, and this is how it's going to play out. If there is more than one nominee for a seat, board approval shall be made as follows. The mayor calls, it's me, the mayor calls for nominations from any of the names identified in the appointment agenda item, which we have in our agenda today. Nominations are made and received, no second is required. I call for a vote. The nominee who receives a majority of the vote is appointed. If no nominee receives the majority vote, then we'll call for a roll for the vote on the two nominees who received the most votes during the initial round. Are there any questions on that? Very good. I am going to open the board up for nominations, know that there doesn't need to be a second, and if a nominee wishes to speak, I'm going to give that person an opportunity to speak. Mr. Attorney?
Just reviewing this, these are from the rules of procedure. They're really, I think, set up where there's one seat, multiple nominations for one seat. I think the board may want to consider doing each seat separately. That would follow these rules a little better, so you're basically, you could take multiple nominations for one seat, vote on that, and we go through that.
And then go on to the second seat. Any objections to that by anybody? I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. All right, so this is what we're going to do. We're going to open the board for nominations for the first seat. That person who is, and we don't need a second, that person who's nominated, will have an opportunity to come up and speak and address the board briefly. We're not going to put the clock on, it'll be briefly, and we'll take a vote, and then we'll open the board up for nominations for the second seat. All right, so at this time, I have some lights on here, I will start with Vice Mayor Marino for nominations for the first seat.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Susan Kennedy. She's, since we got rid of Eldrab, she was a representative on Eldrab, very well thought of, has a lot of experience with this. It sits on the Sir Wicket Board, of which, sorry, South Indian River Control Management District, and so is very experienced and would be a benefit and an asset. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, and Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to nominate Jess Sowards. Thank you.
For the first seat? Thank you. Again, if anybody is here and you wish to speak, come on up to the podium. And Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Jean Marie De Rocha, who I believe she's here, if she would like to speak.
Very good. Thank you very, are you, yeah, you make them on up and speak?
Hi.
Good morning, you're recognized.
I'm Jean De Rocha. I'm a candidate for the zoning commission. It's my pleasure to see you all this morning. A little bit about myself, I've been a resident of Palm Beach County for nearly 30 years. I'm a licensed general contractor and real estate sales associate. I serve on the planning and zoning board for the city of Boca Raton, familiar with the ULDC, Unified Land Development Code. It would be my pleasure and great honor to be able to serve my community and benefit how this community operates and future development. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions at this time? Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate for your service. Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and nominate Rolando Barrero, and I believe he's here in chambers.
Very good. Mr. Barrero, are you present, and would you like to speak? Very good, okay. Come on up, sir, you're recognized.
I just want to thank the commissioner, the vice mayor, mayor, and all the commission for allowing this nomination to go through. I've lived here for 13 years. I am a native South Floridian. I have a strong background in construction management from Miami, from my family, although I am probably the least titled. I have a strong understanding of everything that deals with construction, zoning, and negotiations. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Barrero. All right, nominations are closed. I'm going to just list them. We have, we have Mr. Jeff Sowards, we have Susan Kennedy, we have Rolando Barrero, and we have Jean Marie De Rocha. All right, nominations are closed, so now, we're going to proceed to a vote. I would imagine that it would have to be a roll call vote. Mr. Attorney, would that be good for the one seat?
Yeah, you're going to take a voice vote as to which nominee each board member.
Very good. Okay, so Madam Clerk, you can proceed.
Jess Sowards.
Commissioner Weiss.
Rolando Barrero.
Commissioner Woodward.
Jean Marie De Rocha.
Commissioner Barnett.
Jean Marie De Rocha.
Vice Mayor, or Commissioner Baxter? Jess Sowards. Vice Mayor Marino?
Going, by the way this is going, I will remove my nomination of Susan Kennedy and vote for Jean Marie De Rocha.
And Mayor Sax.
Rolando Barrero.
Jean Marie De Rocha.
Very good. Thank you very much, and congratulations for this. So we're going to proceed on to the second, second position, and the board is open for nominations. Commissioner Baxter.
Mayor, if I may add a question?
Sure, anytime.
Whoever doesn't get the first seat, they can then be nominated?
Absolutely, you can nominate them again.
Well, I was intending, if Jean Marie didn't win the first one, to do the second, but since she won, which, congratulations, I would like to, I guess, re-nominate Jess Sowards.
Okay. Jeff Sowards.
Madam, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I hate to interrupt, but the, the rules do require a majority vote for whoever gets appointed, so what we may want to do is when we get through the first, we have the two nominees, just do another vote at the end of the day, just to get the majority.
But I think we had, I think we had, according to the, to the vote, I think we had a majority for the position.
You had three, two, and two on that last, that's how I.
Three, two, and two.
Three, two, and two, so that would mean then that we would need to vote again on the first position. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, the way the rules read is that you would take the, the two that had the most votes. The problem is you've got a tie for second there, so.
We always, this is always correct, so.
You could certainly have another vote just for, just for that position to move forward. If you get to the end and you have two that have, received the majority in each one, we could do one final vote just with those two that have been nominated to get the majority.
So now we would vote on the person who had the tie vote, but that still doesn't mean that person wins the first position.
No, I was meaning just the one that had the three votes for.
On the three votes.
May, I was going to say, may I change my vote to Jean Marie on that one? Or is it too late?
Wait, now, hold on, hold on, just one, otherwise, the clerk's going to get very confused. So we have, and Mr. Attorney, I need you to opine on this.
Sure.
We had how many votes for, for Jean, see, Jean Marie De Rocha. Madam Clerk, we had?
For Jean Marie, we had three.
Okay, we had three votes, and so for the second, for the second person, we had a tie.
You had a tie with two votes each.
With two votes each, and that would be whom? That would be which?
That would be Jess Sowards and Rolando Barrero.
Okay, so then we need to, all of us vote on those two?
If Commissioner Baxter wishes to change her vote, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Yeah, well.
So maybe we need to do the vote again?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, come here.
What I'd like to do is, can, can we just unanimously approve Jean Marie De Rocha for seat eight, and that's the motion?
Well, that's, that's your. Well, that's, that's your opinion, but maybe some folks, maybe...
You could certainly do another vote for the first seat. I, I don't think it's necessary if Commissioner Baxter wants to change her vote, but...
Okay. So, and I understand what you want to do.
I'll change my vote, too.
You're going to change your vote, too? Okay.
So it's done.
So I think it's done. I think that, unless we need to do a whole new vote, Mr. Attorney?
No, I believe, I believe you've got a majority.
We've got a majority now for, for Jean Marie. Okay. Very good. Let the record reflect that we have a majority for Jean Marie De Rocha. So, congratulations again. All right. Very good. Now we're going to go on to the second position. And so let's have the board open for nominations. And if you already made a nomination, we're going to do it again. Okay? So I'm going to start now to my left. Who have any nominations on the left? Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and nominate again Rolando Barrero.
Very good. And Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to nominate James Williams. He's here.
Who, who's the name again?
James Williams.
Oh, James Williams. Okay. Very good. And sir, if you wish to speak, just as I gave to the others, an opportunity, come forward, sir.
Good morning.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, good morning. James Williams. I was asked by the local chapter of the AIA to step forward for a vacant position. I've been a resident of Palm Beach County for the past 22 years. I'm a licensed architect. Have been doing this for many more years than that. And I just put myself forward as a volunteer. I'm, I'm always willing to help whenever I can.
Very good. Thank you so much, sir, for coming forward for service. And Commissioner Baxter.
I think it was still on from earlier, but are you asking for my nomination?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I will just, again, nominate Jess Sowards.
Jeff Sowards? Okay. And, Mr. Attorney, can the mayor nominate somebody? Why not? I just did. I'm going to nominate Rolando Barrero.
Sure.
Okay. So now we're going to have a vote. Let me re, if the clerk could restate the name, so everybody knows who's nominated for the second position. Go right ahead, Madam Clerk.
So for nominations, we have Jess Sowards.
Jeff Sowards? Okay.
Williams.
Mr. Williams?
And Rolando Barrero.
And Rolando Barrero. Okay. Let's proceed to a voice vote, please.
Commissioner Weiss.
Rolando Barrero.
Commissioner Woodward.
I'm sorry. What were the three again? I'm sorry.
Jess Sowards, James Williams, and Rolando Barrero.
James Williams.
Commissioner Barnett.
James Williams.
Commissioner Baxter.
In the essence of having a complete four, I'm going to go with James Williams. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard.
James Williams.
Vice Mayor Marino.
James Williams.
There we go.
And Mayor Sax.
Rolando Barrero. So if you could, please record the person who got the most votes.
James Williams.
Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Williams. And to Mr. Sowards and Mr. Barrero, thank you for putting your nomination, your service for our county. We look forward to having you serve in another capacity at a later date. Thank you, and congratulations, sir. Do we have any comments by administration? Ms. Baker?
Unless somebody has commissioned district appointments before my comments.
Yes. Do we have any commissioned district appointments? Thank you, Ms. Baker. See none at this time? You're welcome to give any comments that you'd like.
I will be very brief. This is about...
I'm sorry. Just one second. Commissioner Baxter?
Yes.
You do have a commissioned district appointment?
Correct. Which is why I removed Bill Reichert, because I'm going to make him my district appointment. Thank you.
Very good. That's recorded? Thank you. Okay, Ms. Baker, you're on.
Zoning.
For zoning.
Complete. Okay. Sorry, Ms. Baker. Go right ahead.
I just want, when your, when our county staff does something awesome, I like to make sure that the board knows I'm going to do more of that. I wanted to let you know that Alisa Kramer, who is our interim director for youth services, has been awarded the Unsung Hero Award by the Juvenile Justice Circuit Advisory Board. Her work above, she goes above and beyond along the prevention to reentry continuum of care, to enhance services and supports to youth and families. A very well-deserved honor for her. Her work with DCF and now Youth Services Division has been tremendous. We, when she was with the state at DCF, she was the person that you could call and try to work issues out for our families here. So we're lucky to have her here. Plus, she's a native of West Palm Beach. And she, the official award presentation is today, March 12.
Very nice. Thank you so much for those comments, Ms. Baker.
Alisa, would you stand so that the board will know who you are?
Appreciate your service. Excellent. Thank you. Staff is only as good as its leader. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Appreciate for all you do. All right. Now we're going to go on to our attorney. Any attorney comments?
No comments.
That's good. Thank you for your help today. Now we're going on to commissioners' comments. And I'm going to start to my left with Commissioner Barnett.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I know Mr. DiMario's not here, but I did want to say that I had the chance to visit the Vita Nova Village last week and see firsthand the great work that they're doing for the young people who are, who at the time, who I met, were getting ready to move into housing of their own. A friend of mine, who is an attorney with DCF, gave a presentation and counseled with them and spoke with them about all the things they need to do to be ready to find an apartment, read through a lease, and prepare to live on their own for the first time. It was great work that the folks at Vita Nova do, and I just wanted to echo what so many of you on the board said earlier today. And thank Mr. DiMario and Vita Nova. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you. I just wanted to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day this weekend.
That's right. It's coming up. We're all Irish. All right. Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to report that FDOT responded favorably to my request to install pedestrian safety enhancements on Dixie Highway near the Green School. The Green School is growing. It recently added a high school, and many kids walk or bike to school. And we've seen some crashes in this stretch of Dixie Highway. Lots of constituents have raised the issue of speeding in the area. So I'm grateful to FDOT that they agreed that there is a need for reduced speed zone for pedestrian, for school pedestrian traffic. Work is expected to start in December 2025. In the meantime, the department is going to look at the signal timing. They're going to install a no, a no right turn on red at the Flamingo Road stop line on the east side of Dixie. So I want to give a shout out to Steve Braun and his staff at District Four for making this happen, keeping our, our children safe in, in the area. And then lastly, I just, I need to announce that we have a new foster. We just had three kittens. They moved out of our house, and we've got a new...
Did they go into foster care?
They, they actually went over to Peggy Adams, and they're with another, another foster now. They, Rebecca was able to get them, they were bottle feed, bottle-fed kittens, and so she got them on their bottles. And so once they're good to go, she transferred them over to another foster. But we brought in a, what's called a Savannah F4, which is a partially, they were bred with African servals and domestic house cats. This one was unfortunately, by its previous owners, left, put out and left outside. And somebody was able to get him, and, and so now he's, he's fostering in our house, too. And I, just a reminder to folks that, number one, if you, if you have an animal and you no longer can keep it, do the right thing and take them to either an animal rescue or Animal Care and Control. Animal Care and Control will take every animal that is brought to them, not to just put them outside, to allow them to fend for themselves. It's, it's, it's not a good thing. It's not good for our community, and it's certainly not good for the animals that have been raised inside. And then, and secondly, it is kitten season starting up, and so there's lots, I'm sure there's going to be lots of kittens soon. So if you have room in your home, please consider adopting.
Commissioner Weiss, thank you for all you do for our most vulnerable animals. And we really appreciate it. You're well-known at the Animal Care and Control. I think every time you go there, I can hear every cat meow. And I do want to note that we do have a visitor here today. Commissioner Woodward has a visitor with her, and if she could just stand up and show everybody? And this was, this little guy was a rescue, she rescued him from Animal Care and Control, located right here, West Palm Beach. So please do consider, and he doesn't bite, he just kisses everybody. So please, think about adopting at Animal Care and Control. All right. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. You know, this month is Women's History Month, so I want to make sure that we continue to highlight the women in our district, in our community, throughout Palm Beach County who contribute to the fabric of Palm Beach County. I see Casey Denny, who's here backing, back from Tallahassee. So thanks for the work that you've done in Tallahassee. My colleagues who are on the dais, Mayor Sax, Vice Mayor Marino, Commissioner Maria Marcy Woodward, and Commissioner Sarah Baxter, our county administrator, Verdina Baker, and Denise Kaufman, since she knew I was going to be announcing her name, so she was like, I'm going to be sick today. But she's not here today, but we appreciate the work that she does as our, as our attorney for the county. I do have to recognize my chief of staff, Will Need Emanuel, and then my wife and my three daughters. But I, but I have to say something before, before I say that, because last week, I was humbled and honored to be recognized for my birthday, but then when I got home, my wife was like, you didn't, where was your, my card? And I got yelled at. So...
I hope she's watching right now.
I'm hoping that she's watching. But before, you know, we did have some technical issues, and there were so many people who actually sent comment cards, and, but they didn't get a chance to get them read. So I just want to recognize them today. You know, Pastor Ray Whitley, Dr. Carleen Clergey, Mr. Chuck Ridley, Darren Romulus, Anique Elise, Nicole Elise, Dr. Judy Sineas, Beto David, and of course, my wife.
Say her name.
Sean Bernard. So it was a technical difficulty, and I just want to say thank you to all of the birthday wishes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Very nice. Thank you. Well spoken. Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the note of birthdays, yesterday was my dad's birthday, so I want to wish my dad a very happy birthday. I won't tell his age, just in case. And also, I have twin nieces and, a twin niece and nephew, their birthday was also yesterday. So happy birthday to Keegan and Corbin. I wanted to also follow up on the, earlier, when we were discussing the ordinance, everyone has received basically the memo regarding just some of the key points of what I wanted staff to take a look at and bring back to us. So without objection, do, does it need to be read?
If you want a part of the record, you could receive and file.
So I'll just receive and file it, please. And, you know, adding it, too. Do you need a motion?
Shall we go ahead? Let's go ahead and be safe. Let's, go ahead.
Motion, please.
Commissioner, can you make the motion? We have a second by Commissioner Bernard, all those four. Anybody opposed, see that it passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Baxter.
So thank you for that. And lastly, I would like to give direction, just for staff to look at the portion on Northlake and kind of bring back to us what the TIM says about regarding the described between, the segment described between the western edge of Sand Hill Crane Golf Course and eastward towards SR7. We've talked about this, and my residents have reached out. Every time we talk about roads in there, even if it's not regarding Northlake, they talk about Northlake and its need for more capacity. So I'd just like staff to bring that back to us to take a look at.
Very good. That's noted. And Vice, I mean, Administrator Baker, you're recognized.
Just wanted to let you all know, Commissioner Bernard doesn't just yell at me, he gives me that look, too, just for the record. No, just teasing.
Could we see that look once again?
But I, I do want to follow up on his comments. For his birthday, there was a glitch in the system. We did find out much later. And I don't want to be in trouble with Mrs. Bernard on this issue. So I do want to say publicly, thank you to all the people that sent it in, and I do apologize for the glitches that occurred with them trying to send it in. But a special apology to the Mrs. Bernard.
I sure hope she's watching. Okay. Vice Mayor Marino.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the organizational structure review binder you all received at the March 5 BCC regular meeting.
All right. We have a motion and a second, all those four. Anybody against? I'm glad we have anybody against those files.
Well, I really hope you all take, take the time to read it. It was a heavy lift. It really should be something used for onboarding in the future. There's a lot of very good information that, and some good answers there. And also, it is all online. If you go to the splash page, which I can't remember, but there's a splash page that has all this information, so the public can also see it. I would like to give a shout out, and Eric Hall doesn't know I'm doing this, but I'd like to give a shout out to Eric Hall, who is being inducted into the Palm Beach County Sports Hall of Fame, along with me, on March 24.
Very good. Congra, if I could just finish the vote. We have a first and a second, all those four. Nobody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. Those were the magic words.
Can we please have the second repeated for the record?
Who was the first and the second?
Yes, please.
It was Vice Mayor Marino, and it was a...
Commissioner Weiss.
Commissioner Weiss. And it was unanimous vote? Okay. Go right ahead with the sports. I want to hear again, the Sports Hall of Fame.
I wanted to give a shout out to Eric Hall. And, oh, well, me, too. But we're both being inducted into the Palm Beach County Sports Hall of Fame, March 24, at the Kennel Club. So if anybody hasn't bought their tickets, please do so. I would like to give a shout out and a thank you to David Ricks on staff for doing a presentation at Palm Beach Gardens City Hall on Thursday evening in reference to traffic. They did a great job. Lots of, lots of answers to questions. And no, we will not be interfering at all with quiet zones. That was one of the major questions, was if we put a, the lighting program in place, are we going to interfere with quiet zones? And we are not. I would also like to request a certificate of recognition for retiring police chief Clinton Shannon from Palm Beach Gardens. He has served 45 years in law enforcement in many different capacities, worked with Palm Beach County, worked with FBI. And I would just like to do a certificate of recognition for him from the board, if that's possible.
Yes, we have a first from Vice Mayor Marino, a second by Commissioner Weiss, all those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously.
And that would be it. Thank you.
Congratulations on your induction to the Sports Hall of Fame. That's very impressive. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick, Willie from my office informed me that Dr. Debbie Robinson did submit a letter. So I want to, so if I forget anybody, please forgive me. But I just want to add, although that we experienced technical difficulties for this issue, what I'm hoping is that, you know, for some of our residents, you know, who are submitting comment cards, that, you know, this doesn't happen in the future where they may have comments that they would like to get to us and it's not read. And so I'm hoping that we're able to address this fix. So that's the main reason why I'm bringing it up, is just so in that way, we don't have this issue for our residents to be frustrated in the future.
Commissioner, have we gotten a good response from our tech people on this?
Yes, ma'am. We got it the same day. And we're following up. There were some clarifications that we need to make on our site for people to also click. And we're looking at firewalls, because all of that plays a role. So yes, we dug into it immediately.
It was a very good idea to go from those issues to correcting it for the future. And if I may, I have a, I'd like to declare March 2024 as Florida Bicycle Month. And.
Motion to declare.
March 24 as bicycle month.
As bicycle. Okay. You've got those two. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. And I'd also like to declare March 28, 2024, as Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office Volunteer Day. And if I could have a first.
So moved.
By Commissioner Baxter, a second by Commissioner Weiss, all those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. And then the last, and I'm going to need the help of Commissioner Baxter on this, because it will be in her district. I had a wonderful, wonderful staff member. And she passed away about a year ago. And that was Michelle Demone. I just want to pass it on to Commissioner Baxter.
So someone who was a strong representative in the acreage for quite a while. And in full disclosure, I didn't know too much about her until the mayor had brought it up. So I want to thank her for recognizing someone who helped shape the acreage area. And I would like to make a motion to name the acreage pines boardwalk after Michelle Demone.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously. Okay. I, I think we're about ready to adjourn, unless anybody else. I have to say, it was a very good meeting. Appreciate everybody's comments and direction. And at this moment, we are going to adjourn Palm Beach County Commission meeting. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.